Good evening, everyone. Let's begin with our invocation. Just take a moment of silence and reflection, please. All right. Thank you very, very much. And welcome to all of you that are with us here tonight. And those of you that may not have been here before, if you'll go to the table in my left rear, there'll be a copy of the agenda and some other documents here that might help you follow the meeting. And we're glad that you are all here. We'll officially call this meeting to order. The judge is not here tonight. He had a cataract surgery today. And so he has other things on his mind right now, but as far as I know, everything went well. He'll be back with us the next time we gather. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag to my right, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on the agenda is consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to re-approve. Give me a second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. Number five, consideration of approving the minutes for December 20 meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
That's it. I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion any? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's unanimously approved. We are now at number six. If we can move this fast all night, we'll be out of here for too long. Public comments on agenda items. I have two people that have signed up. First person being Jim Bauer.
Good evening. Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. I'd like to speak to Agenda Item 10 regarding 796 Ocean Boulevard West. As we all know, the older a house gets, the longer and more money you have to pour into it in order to keep it up to snuff. I would just like to suggest once again that what we can do is we can sell this and divest ourselves of it. The good point about it was, of course, the new owners are coming to the nuisance. They understand that where they're going to be living next to the pump station, so they'll be aware of it. They'll be going into it eyes wide open. It'll be an income stream for the town two ways, both as a sale and, of course, also the ongoing property taxes from the date of sale there on. Another great point is the lessons, the liabilities and the costs that the town has to incur because we're losing one more, another piece of property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Caldwell? Yes, sir. We want you.
Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Phil Caldwell. I live at 121 Ocean Boulevard. No, I don't. South Shore Drive. I know where I live. Oh, I've been told to include the following disclaimer, and that these opinions are mine and not necessarily those of my wife Sally. I am and always have been a proponent of parking fees for control of future island use, but not for revenue generation. I feel that all those who use the beach should be responsible for maintenance and paid parking shares that responsibility with the property owners. Having said that, for the present, I think that parking may be a little expensive for some non-property owners. Everyone should have access to the beach, and parking fees may limit that for families with limited resources. I suggest having some parking spaces designated as free on a first-come, first-served basis, which would be good PR for Holden Beach. I suggest that, present, it's not necessary to charge for boat trailers. Many, many days during the past summer, spaces were empty. Charging for trailers is keeping boaters away. It would be good PR, again, for Holden Beach to have a few spaces designated as free. The empty spaces during the summer indicate to me that parking fees are keeping boaters away. I have no irons in the following fire. As of last summer, I was never in a situation needing a paid space. Board needs to throw the property owners a bone, and that is, property owners should not be charged for parking on the island. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. All right. We're now on number seven.
I'm just sorry. You guys have some public comments that were provided on the Internet by students, you guys, and they're on the website for anybody who would like to see them.
Yeah, I think most of us have already read those.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure in case anybody was listening, know that there's some on the website.
Right. All right. Number seven, Commissioner Murdock?
I don't think this is really my item, but Shane Lippert's here to provide an estimate on the bulkheads and AR block that we've had delineated. Is that correct, Shane?
That's correct. Thank you. Good to see you all tonight. Happy New Year.
Before you get started, if any of you cannot hear, if you'll raise your hand, we'll try to move microphones around or change batteries or whatever we need to do. So if you cannot hear, just raise your hand and let me know that you can't hear, and we'll try to make it better.
Thanks, sir. I think in the package for tonight's meeting, there was a preliminary plan of the two bulkhead lots in question. There was a wetland delineation that was done by the town, and there's been surveying done by the town that helps delineate where the bulkheads can be placed, you know, based on the camma rack line and those types of things. Parking lot one, I believe, is the, I don't remember the address of that one, but they're both down in the 700, 800 block of Ocean Boulevard West. And then the other area was the one adjacent to Lot 6, that I think is along Ocean Boulevard West. The total of the bulkhead length on both of those properties concerned is a little over 700 feet, and it runs about, you know, of course, the camma line, which is about elevation two, and then there's some elevation up on the ground, maybe around seven. So you're probably looking at a, you know, five-foot, six-foot exposed, you know, bulkhead and, you know, on the side of the camma line. So we've drawn that out. I did confer with Mr. Will Richardson on a few things, you know, to kind of get some average costing that, you know, things are running, you know, about these pricing these days. And, you know, the, about an average linear foot price is, you know, it's close to the $350 per foot range for, you know, this type of bulkhead with a continuous tieback. And then also looking at, you know, there'll need to be some selective clearing on the site, some erosion control, surveying, mobilization. And then, you know, at this stage, we normally put a contingency percentage in there just to, you know, look at it from a good programmatic aspect. So the preliminary construction cost estimate that we've evaluated for, you know, that, these two properties, it gets in about the $300,000 range. $298, $925 was the exact number, but, you know, I think a good program budget number is around $300,000. And, of course, that's, you know, that's as of today, you know, you know, construction prices go, you know, tend to fluctuate a little bit, but I think that's about a good program number for those two parcels combined.
Any questions from you commissioners? Comments?
Comment? I personally, at this point, don't see the need to do anything on the 700 block, little piece of property. That is not gonna, that's not gonna provide enough space for us to use as any sort of parking. It's not really close to a walkway. I would focus on 800. I would also say, however close this is or not, and I'll leave that to other experts, I would say, before we do anything further, now that we have a delineation, we have something firm in front of us, we really need to understand how many parking places we have and how that flow works. Because if we're only gonna get 15 or 16 parking places for this investment, you question whether or not you're gonna wanna go forward. And I don't think we ever got anything really, really firmed up, did we?
No.
So I think now we simply need to say, okay, we've got an estimate here. We can revisit it if we need to, but we now need to understand, how many parking spaces are we talking about? So how do we wanna go forward on that?
Well, I think the general consensus is that they don't want parking in the 800 block. There's already parking in the 700 block, and most of the public concern has been to leave that area green.
And I think the majority of the board has said that we're willing to investigate putting the parking in. If we don't put parking in at the 800 block, then doing a lot at 796 for restrooms, facilities, et cetera, kind of becomes a question mark. Also, the 800 block provides more down-island parking that, assuming we get a 50-year plan from the Corps, and they wanna keep moving down and putting sand further down the island than just the pier, this is our remote parking that helps us justify the cost of the federal program. 'Cause that's the way it works. If we don't have parking around accesses, and those accesses are every half-mile, and you don't have 10 spaces of parking within a quarter-mile of those accesses, then those accesses, if they get sand, the federal government doesn't pay their share for that. And so past the pier, we don't have a whole lot. And we hoped that, based on our own camma sort of permit and our own feel, we might be able to get down to Swordfish with sand. Correct me if I'm wrong, David, but that was sort of where things were looking for a permit at some point.
It escapes me as far as what the Ocean Boulevard address is at Swordfish.
Uh, 880-ish, 900. You're getting close to 900.
Yeah.
880-ish, 900.
Oh. It escapes me what the address on Ocean Boulevard is, Swordfish, the reference to Swordfish, and it's in the 8, 900 block, so...
Yeah. So you're basically, by not continuing to try to get more parking further down the island, you're basically cutting off where the federal government will fund sand on the beach for a 50-year program.
Has that been established by the Corps yet?
They have not given an assessment. You can read all the rules, though. And they were very clear at the meeting that you guys know the rules. It's an access every half-mile, and in this district, it's 10 parking spaces within a quarter-mile of the accesses.
I would like to maybe add on, or maybe taken away, but the template for the Corps sand will have a requirement for a number of parking spaces. The number of parking spaces does not drive where the template goes. The template for the best protective measure will drive the requirement for the location of parking spaces. Not parking spaces driving the requirement for sand on the beach.
Right. So, but...
There's parking at the 700 block already.
There's 11 spaces by Pump Station 3. After that, there's nothing, and there's more walkways west that it's possible, it's possible the program could go to there. And I'm just, this has been part of the...
Well, when the parking plan, when the parking program was brought into, this came up, the 800 block, and there was a number of people here that said they wanted to keep it green, and it was mentioned that the general consensus of the topic was to keep it green, that we would keep it green.
I have not heard a majority of the citizenry on this island weigh in and say they wanna keep it green.
But it was mentioned at a board meeting, there was enough interest to make the comment that if people want it kept green, we'll keep it green. Also, I don't, we've got these other projects. We've got 796 we need to deal with. We've got the pier in Block Q. Starting another project and trying to get that paid for is not...
This is not start, this is not saying we're starting a project. We cannot do our job on figuring out what to do over the next five to 10 years without one-by-one assembling what things are gonna cost, about how long they take, and then prioritizing them year by year so that we can match, what can we do with the revenue we're gonna have? This was one of the things we had on the list that we provided of, we need a project plan for this. It doesn't mean we pull the trigger and do it, but if you don't have cost, you don't have a timeframe of how long it would take, you can't put together an overall plan covering all of the proposed priority projects. We may end up not doing all of the proposed priority projects, but this was one of the 10 of them that we gave, as we need to include this in a master plan that's gonna be a multi-year capital project plan, that we'll have to make selections what to start and what not to start year by year.
One, excuse me, just a minute. One thing that was not mentioned, the number you gave us, $350 a foot plus minus, did not include the backfill and the clearing or any site preparation. That's just the wall itself.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, this got grayed.
No, but I'm talking about the $350 a foot.
Yeah, yeah.
This has gotten off on the parking lot again and continues to. We had these properties, the town properties delineated, in my opinion, to preserve them. If you live on a canal lot, any canal lot on this island, and you don't have a bulkhead, then I want you to seriously, or if you have a bulkhead, I want you to think about the repercussions of taking it down, or see if you could get away with taking it down. But if you did take it down, you would lose property. The town is losing property to erosion in the 800 block, and on the next agenda item, I'm gonna go a little bit further. And every time these high tides come in and they go out, and they come in and they go out, we're losing property. Right now, at this point, I don't think there's a person up here ready to put a bulldozer in the 800 block and put in parking spaces. We don't have a plan, and as of right now, until the Corps does what they do, and it's a requirement that the town have parking spaces in the 800 block, you may never see them. But I bet you, if the Corps comes back and says, hey, we're not gonna put sand past the pier, then all of a sudden, that public opinion of those parking spaces is gonna change, and they will go in, so their project boundaries can be extended to the west. So if that, in the future, becomes something that we have to do, if we have to put a parking lot in, we will have that option if and only if that property's still there. So bulkheading is a way to preserve the property. Nobody said anything about putting in a parking lot. We know there's some resistance, especially from the people that live in the 800 block, that they don't want a parking lot. We don't know what we're gonna do with 796, and frankly, don't have the money to do any of it. But we have to plan for what might happen in the future, and this is just part of it. And asking a question, a typical question shouldn't get a public tire rate up. We're trying to get a price on a bulkhead, which I'm a contractor. I put in bulkheads. I think this is $75,000 high, but that's me. I'm not gonna do the work, so don't get all bent out of shape, but Will Richardson's an absolutely great bulkhead contractor, and I respect his price, but I think it can be done for $225. That's my opinion. But with that being said, this is solely in one, just to preserve that property from, if it's 60 feet deep this year, and in five years, because the town doesn't want a bulkhead or the public doesn't want a bulkhead, and you go back and it's 40 feet, and then the next time you go back and it's 30 feet, and then all of a sudden, you don't have the option, the town doesn't have the option to put a parking lot in the 800 block anymore because there's wetlands there. And if you ride up and down this town street and you don't see the wetlands encroaching on Ocean Boulevard, then you're not paying attention. So with that being said, all we are trying to do up here, and all we ask for, and this was a simple question, was to get a price on what it would cost to bulkhead the 800 block. Nobody said anything about building a parking lot. And I'm tired of hearing about it.
Well, it was on the plan, that's probably what...
I understand that.
Well, I just...
You don't see parking spaces on the plan. You see a bulkhead plan on those, on those lots. And it would've been nice if, it would've been bigger so everybody could've seen what we were talking about. But that's, that's my take on this, and I appreciate your effort, Shane. And this was, just to clarify, this was one price from one contractor? Or did you...
Well, right, yeah. This wasn't a, and this isn't a bid process, which...
I understand.
It will have to go to that. If you, you know, decide to build it, it would need to be publicly bid. But this was a, this is more of a, an engineering preliminary estimate.
Does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Lippert?
I have a point, I have a point that I wanna share with the board. We have the engineer's estimate of probable cost, but where we have stopped short is we haven't proceeded acquiring the camma permit. In order to get a camma permit, we have to have a design in order to do so, so if that's the intent of the board, we need to detail that now, if we can, so Mr. Shane can get to work on some, some designs in order to get a camma permit for it.
When you say designer, you're talking about just a simple design of a bulkhead?
Yeah, enough typical design for permitting process, you know, with camma. You know, it wouldn't, it doesn't have to show anything else, you know, but the bulkhead if, you know, if you wanted to have that in place in case that comes about.
The clearing, the limited clearing it would take to put in the bulkhead, that's not a very, just for general information, that's not a very hard process.
No, no.
But it's, it's still something that we've stopped short of, and if that's desired the board, of the board to proceed in that direction. I need to, to hear that we're gonna cut out the little piece at 760, delete that from the, from the, from the, from the direction, or to go and get a camma permit for the whole thing?
How long is that permit good for if we were to get it?
Uh, valid? Yeah, I'm not sure, Brian. I would say three to five years, but...
If it's an extended period of time, do you know, Tim, 'cause...
I think it's depending on which permit they require you to get there, but if it's, if it's like a major permit or a general permit, it's gonna be good for one year. It's a regular camma permit, it could be good for up to... And the numbers, our average number for bulkhead cost per linear foot is somewhere between $225 and $280. That's, that's what's being charged.
Yeah.
And it depends on the height, you know?
Yeah.
Can we confirm how long the permit would be before, because if it's one year and we're not...
If it's, if it doesn't matter which ones they are, you can ask for extensions. I mean, you can get it extended. But we can find out, I can get you a definitive answer, the board can give us a definitive answer.
Can you bring a definitive answer to the next meeting, and then we can make a decision on, should we go forward with the design right now?
Or maybe the clerk can just email us.
Yeah. Because if it's multi-year, I don't see any reason not to go forward and apply for it.
Shane will need to check to see what permit he can get. If I can answer the question, he'll be able to answer it while we're...
We'll get an email to you, then.
All right. Anything else on this matter?
With all, my only comment on this is Rick Smith. I live directly across the street from this proposed area and have since 19, well, my family's owned it since 1958. I've owned it for 33 years. There is a roof to my neighbor's house that blew off in Hurricane Charlie, and as far as it being eroded, it has eroded no more than a couple of feet. It's still right there. So I don't see the urgency, really, in doing the bulkheading until it comes time that we need to do it. And that's, again, my opinion. It's, it's okay just the way it is.
All right. Any more comments or questions or concerns?
I'd just like to confirm the direction to the staff that we're gonna, we're gonna get a time limit certain on how, what type of camma permit's required, and also the duration, life cycle of that permit, bring it back to the board.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We're on number eight. Mr. Murdock?
This is kind of piling on the same topic. This is concerning the park course area, which is the fitness trail basically down the north side of Ocean Boulevard. It may not be eroding in the 800 block, but it's eroding down through there to the point where the timbers are floating up just about every tide, and we're losing gravel out from underneath those spaces, and the wetlands are encroaching. We haven't had that delineated, marked by camma and the proper authorities, and I'm proposing that we do that just to get a baseline of where we're at right now. I feel like especially, that area may be more critical to the public than, than 800 block at, at this juncture, but I feel like if we don't do something with that in the next few years, that we will lose part of, if not all of the park course to the, to the tide, to the, to the water. So if we could establish a baseline delineation now to see exactly where we're at, that's all I'm asking for on this, this subject. Because I drive down through there, I get out and look, and some of them are in disrepair right now from, from the tides being so high and coming in and undermining the actual structures that are there. And if people are gonna use them this summer, and I see, I see tons of people using them and enjoying them in the summertime, I'd hate to lose them, but hey, you know, if, if the bulkhead or the hard structure's not an option, that's, that's really the only option to save them, I think. And you got bike paths coming, sidewalks next, you know, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know where Mother Nature's gonna stop, but I don't know anybody that's beat her yet. So I would like to make a motion that we delineate the wetlands, the entire length of the park course.
I'll second that, Brian.
Discussion?
I've gotta agree with Brian. Every time we have a king tide or a lunar tide, whatever you wanna call it, we seem to, Chris has to go out there with his guys and push the framework back down and, and put gravel back in it and fill it back in, and it's, it's a little different territory over there. It's awful flat through there in that marsh. When it gets water in it, it comes basically right up to, when it comes on Scotch bonnet. So, you know, it's, it's not far from getting in the roadway. And as I see it, you know, once it gets past the exercises, uh, section there, we'll get to the sidewalk, and then eventually the road. So doing the delineation, I think, is important so we can either bulkhead it or put rocks or stone in it or something to keep it from causing Chris to have to rebuild it every time we have a high tide.
Ms. Pedd, or Doc, you got any comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous? Number nine, Madam Clerk?
Seagull Drive was paved recently using the special assessment process of the North Carolina... Carolina General Statute, Chapter one sixty-eight, Article ten. All costs are in and total two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. The next step required is for the board to adopt the assessment resolution, which will direct the administrative actions needed to begin the collection process. We're recommending March fourteenth at the regular meeting for the public hearing date, the state provides information or the time necessary for the tax collector to prepare the assessment role and for me to advertise and hit the notification deadlines. The suggested motion is to approve Resolution twenty-three oh one, Resolution declaring costs and ordering preparation of preliminary assessment role and setting time and place for public hearing on the preliminary assessment role for the improvement of Seagull Drive.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three oh one.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Discussion, anybody?
My only question is, do we have to make another motion for the date of the public hearing, Heather?
No, it's included right in the resolution, so you guys are fine for that.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no. Unanimous? We're on number ten, Assistant Town Manager Ferguson?
Mr. Evans has been instrumental on this as well, so he may have, um, be able to answer some questions for you guys along the way. Um, standing beside me here is David Wood. He's developed some preliminary pa, plans that were in your agenda packet. Um, if you guys remember, it was almost a year ago, the February meeting last year, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board provided you with the tasker that you gave them, which was to come up with a recommendation for seven ninety-six. They went through several different variables and the final recommendation was for seven ninety-six to ultimately become a sort of community recreation facility. Um, the proposed plans are before you so that you guys could make any suggestions to those before it goes to engineering analysis, which was in this year's budget. Um, just to make a note before you begin going through the plans with Mr. Wood, um, at some point, um, maybe next month, you may want to consider because, uh, based on direction from the last board meeting, you would potentially be looking at the bids for any repair or rehab as well as, uh, income projections. The board will want to consider that this is still a water asset and currently, um, any thing that's done in terms of cost or revenue, you'll need to consider if that's going to be water or if it's going to become a recreation facility, at what point B Park purchases it, um, from funds, but just a reminder that currently this is a water asset. Um, and I'll turn things over to Mr. Wood to talk through his plans.
Um, I don't know where to start exactly, but the elevation that I've got drawn here pretty much keeps the same, look and feel of the current, uh, home there now. Uh, we did change up some of the siding and obviously add the bigger back porch, uh, the stairs, exterior stairs to the, you know, second floor area, probably. Basically on, on the first floor, I've got like a small kitchenette on the left side and it doesn't have any, you know, other sink and, uh, second refrigerator and microwave dishwasher in that area, a little serving area, um, storage room next to it. I've tried to keep, um, the bathroom, the, you see the bathroom as well, handicapped special bathroom. Tried to keep all the windows on the side of the house, um, I've trans windows which are hot, you know, you know, see out, you know, so speakers provide light and I put larger windows at the front and the back so you can direct your mission towards the front without the back, it's mostly, uh, treating the fire or the house next to you. Largest deck a little bit, I think we, if a large deck, we don't have any that ran into that first floor. Um, the second floor, we use it for whatever, I mean, storage space, office space, whatever. I did not provide a, you know, obviously I'm going to have a, get this, um, public grid ready for home. You've got an elevator for it, so I just provided stairs to it up on there and that would not be used for public use. That, I've got a office, you know, set up as office space right now. You can open it, leave it open, it doesn't mean us, whatever you, whatever you want to do with that. I don't want to say it's totally open, it's a structure on, uh, shoulder. The, so the ground level, we just took, I, I put, uh, two showers on the left, two handicap bathrooms on the, um, right side. I do have roll-up doors in the front for security, I guess that would be looking closed every day, like these people can stand over there after hours. And I just took the storage room, I mean, there's, again, there's multiple things you can do in the area. If you can store it or provide yourself.
So now it'll be up to the board for any questions, suggestions, comments?
My, my only question is, you said in the pump station, there's how many parking places, Pat?
I think it's eleven.
You think eleven parking places is going to be enough to support such a recreation facility? Again, that's where I don't just, I can't justify the cost, uh, of this for a facility where everybody's either have to walk to, ride a bicycle to, only eleven people will be able to park. So, you know, as far as the restroom facilities downstairs, I think, uh, at, at that particular juncture where there is a, a major access that's used considerably, uh, that having the restrooms on the ground floor like that and the shower is probably a good idea, it keeps them from, uh, using the undersides of, of our houses for such. So it's, uh, I, I, I like that portion of it. Uh, but I think, again, as far as getting this, uh, moving it forward, it needs to, uh, maybe hold off until we can have the revenue to do such. That's just my opinion.
And I'll just answer the first part of your question with what they compared it to. You asked about the parking being ample and the plan. Um, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board looked at the community center at Ocean Isle and they have the ability to pull under that structure, but between the public parking next to it and pulling underneath, I don't think there's more than eleven spaces. The idea for the open part of the facility where this was and moving the kitchen here from where it's here now was for rental space for like birthday parties. So the idea was that you would not have as many cars because you're going to have drop offs for a birthday party and rental, but that's where the thinking was for that, to answer your question. I'm, I'm not arguing with you about the number of spaces, I'm just telling you what the thought process is.
Right. Now, if, if it's going to be used for that, what kind of revenue do you expect to gain out of it or what's the payback? Are we going to, I just don't, you know, do we spend a lot of money having a place, uh, a venue like that, well, is, is, is it going to generate enough income to, to help at least cover expenses?
And off the top of my head, I don't have their rental fee, but normal typical shelter rental fees for outside areas are anywhere around seven, seventy-five to a hundred dollars for a four-hour period, so one to one fifty, I would think, for indoor space.
Anyone else?
Um, yeah, I have a question. Um, as far as the bathrooms go, I know it's been mentioned that the concern is, um, outside showers so that people don't have to go inside to change, that they can just use a place to rinse, rinse off their feet and stuff because they're using people's showers underneath the house. Would it be possible maybe for that one bathroom in the front to be an open area so it can be used for just rinsing feet, toys and things like that before they get in people's car and that way it's left open-
You still have enough room-
To the outside.
Back here, it's not this back.
Yeah, so I-
It's open, you slide those two back.
Yeah, so I think-
Still have some storage.
Yeah, I think the bathrooms, the handicap bathrooms, because right now there's a porta john down there that's very unsightly and I think the bathrooms here, but I think they have a need for outside showers instead of that much inside showers. And, um, I think that's a good location too, I think we talked about for the tur, town turtle talk, um, with yoga and things like that, like if it rained, would that be a good option to do the yoga crafts and things like that down there?
You could do a program like we do yoga on the basketball court because you have a contractor with the town who has their liability insurance. I don't know the answer with that with Turtle Patrol because they're independent, so I would have to defer to, um, us checking on that. But a contract staff person carries their liability insurance, so they would be overseeing it while they're there for yoga or that kind of thing.
And could this be a facility where in future the town could lease or loan out, um, beach wheel chairs for, um, because there's the wide access there that people could come to the eight hundred block and get those chairs to take disabled handicap people out onto the beach?
Um, I think that is a wide discussion I have at a different point in time just because I have a background with that from my previous job at O'Gallen where we did that through a rec center and that takes a lot of coordination and staff effort. So it would require extra staff to do that, so I don't want to answer you that yes, you can do that because that is an intense staff and maintenance program. Typically those chairs come back almost broken every day and it, you really have to have somebody on site to take care of that issue, especially when you have a logbook with reservations and say Brian has reserved it today and brings it back broken and Pat has it checked out tomorrow and you're here on the way for your family and you're mad because your chair's not broken. So I have a lot of extensive experience with those chairs. We had three and they were almost broken every day. So the question is, yes, you may be able to fit it through doors, but it's very intensive staff-wise and maintenance-wise, so I would hate to answer your question in that fashion.
Could this be a central location for the beach rangers in the summertime? As a sort of a-
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't have a stopping point now except to like come back to the pier for porta jones or facilities or if they get caught in a rainstorm. And they're down at that end.
I'm going to say that with everything going on right now, we have this rendition, we understand the possibilities. The fact that something was budgeted for an engineering assessment, I would actually propose we hold that money right now. There are a lot of other things coming up and, um, again, this is something that we're not going to be able to do in the immediate future. I, I just, I just think that this is one now that we have something in front of us, we understand the capacity of the building, the capability of the building, how the bathrooms can go in, but we're not going to act on it in the next year. So preserving that, that engineering assessment for another year, or at least let's hold it until we see where we are on getting some other stuff done that's equally important.
If, if that's the desire of the board, do I understand that what we want to do is maintain what we would have set aside for engineering analysis for next fiscal year and then the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was in the capital improvement plan for next fiscal year for rehab would shift right?
Well, I think we're going to make those decisions at the budget meetings of how far to shift things, but I'm just saying at this point in time, how much was the engineering budget? What was the next step? What's the, what's the-
This was forty thousand.
I think that forty thousand dollars would be better used to paint, repair their steps, fix the air conditioning units to replace them. I think we've got some, uh, the bids are still out and do back in like the nineteenth, something like that. So, uh, again, this due to other projects that I think take precedent over this, uh, we need to make it, uh, maintain the facility as we would maintain, as we would require anybody else on the beach to maintain their facilities, their homes and, uh, and use it for, again, to possibly rent it for income, uh, purposes, uh, to help reimburse us for that and then take a look at this again, uh, the, after we do the budget and see when we can maybe even work it in the following year. And, but we have a lot of irons in the fire that I think, uh, we need to, uh, address first, but I, the concept is great. I, I like the idea of, uh, being able to u, utilize the space, uh, especially with the, uh, you know, having a ADA compliant restrooms downstairs, I think would be a, a definite plus for the people that, uh, walk and, and ride their bikes and stuff up and down the beach. And as far as, use the access there at eight hundred, eight oh three to, uh, get out on the beach and, and not come back and like I say, do things they're not supposed to on other people's property. So it's, it's a good, uh, using the upstairs offices can be, you know, it could be, actually we could lease those out, maybe even auto-connect, they might even have an on-site location for there to base their operations. There's a lot of good uses for that facility, but as far as doing anything right now, I think it's, uh, we're, we're jumping, jumping the gun. Let's just get it where it looks like something the town can be proud of instead of an eyesore that it is now.
But if we put it in the budget, there's nothing that says that it can't be done in the first half of next fiscal year. You know, it's not, it's not saying we're going to put it off indefinitely, but I think Rick's got that, that money right now, rehabilitate the building and in the first half of the next fiscal year, we can do the engineering.
The improvements that we make to the building now such as air conditioning units, will they, would they figure it in to still be used in this? So if we replace the air conditioning units, would they be able to be used with this?
So they'd be put on the back deck, which is a better place for them anyway.
You, you're not going to be able to, you, you can't, when you, when you convert this building, you're converting it from a residential occupancy to a business occupancy. Business occupancy requirements have a totally different ventilation and, uh, fresh air intake and that kind of stuff, it's a different system. So, so you're not going to be able to put, uh, uh, or put the air conditioner in their s, air conditioning systems or HVAC systems in there the same, uh, way. They're going to have to be configured differently. Um, so you don't have an, you, you're really not approving anything other than saying that you like the concept, we have no engineering, we don't know how the building's going to be designed and so we don't know how to properly put in any new HVAC system to accommodate the, the outfits. We just don't know how to do it. Nobody would without that. So you, you're basically repairing, that's what we looked at, repairing what you got there, making it where it's livable. Uh, for instance, the, the duct system downstairs got to be changed. It's a, it's actually, uh, uh, come to the point where it needs to be replaced. That duct system would be totally different for airflow and for other things when it came for a business occupancy. So we're doing minimum repair compared to what we may do in the future. Uh, we would have to do a full plan to determine how to properly put the HVAC in there for business occupancy. I guess the answer's no.
This is Brian. With that being said, we are currently pricing, replacing those two HVAC units and doing some repairs, paint and so forth to that house. Is it, is it all for naught or is it? I guess what I'm saying is, if, if we were going in the direction of, of doing this or improving it to this level, it seems to me if we were going to put something new in, we would go ahead and try to do it at this point. It, it'll be redundant if you say in two years, if the public says, let's do this and we're tearing out a two-year- And we're tearing out a two-year-old air conditioning system that we're currently looking at putting in.
I, I think you're asking me a question about a scenario that the board set up when they, when they decided that they wanted to make it available to be rented compared to not being completed with the plans that they wanted for the future. So I think staff went ahead and went forward with what y'all had placed out there. In other words, y'all asked for it to be fixed, improved, the air conditioner is fixed and all that. At the same time, you had a conceptual drawing going and the, the direction was that we make it available to, to rent. Staff did not, we did not preclude that anything would be approved because that's what staff's not, we're not supposed to do that. It's not our job to determine that you're going to approve that in the future and then make accommodations for what may not happen. And so we never, we never had the opportunity or the ability to, to plan for a future upgrade that hadn't been approved yet.
Well, it depends on how long you want to be in the rental business. We had mentioned a year.
Well, that was, that was tossed out there to, to pay the note for, for painting it and not, and relieving the eyesore for the neighborhood, so to speak, in the interim. And that's all really we were trying to do. If, if we were to go forward in the near future with something like this, I think that it is advisable to figure out what we would need to put in. So we wouldn't be wasting that money. But I think that we're going to run into time constraints. We're not going to be able to overcome and budget constraints. I think, I, I don't know, we're in a catch 22, I believe, as far as do we want to get it up snuff and make it presentable right now fairly quickly and possibly rent it to recoup that money or not. It doesn't, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. But I just don't think we have time to plan it, do it, get it done. And, and get it done, say by the summer, you know, for, to be presentable. Or it's not eyesore or even to rent it if that was going to be the end result. So I don't know.
I mean, let's be practical. Will, will the existing air conditioning get through another year? I mean, I'm just going to say, even if we weren't going to use the building for anything, we can't allow the air conditioning to die because you're going to end up then with a building that's going to start destroying itself from the inside just for moisture and everything. So one way or another, whether we, we progressed in a year or it's two or three, if the air conditioning died, then the building's compromised after a short period of time.
That's absolutely true.
So.
Those air conditioners won't make it.
They won't.
And you couldn't, if we were to rent it, you couldn't.
You can't, the, the stands themselves and the condition of the units preclude the reuse of those units. When you pump those units down, it, the, the exact term that we laughed about between me and the contractors was you're going to end up with a pile of dust.
Well, I'm going to say that I think knowing what's in front of us for already committed funds, thinking it's only a year to wait is overly optimistic. That, you know, what we're going to be doing is going to be planned, but it's probably going to be one of those. It's going to be three or four years down the road before it gets up to the top of the, top of the heap for the funding that's available. So we need to replace it with, I'll call them residential HVAC. We replace it with residential HVAC.
You could put window units in for temporary. Well, you laugh, but I mean.
I don't, I don't see putting money, $30,000 into making the house presentable to rent when we're going to eventually proceed with this. You're putting lipstick on a pig for something that we want to be beautiful and usable.
He said the outside of the house is basically going to be the same.
Right. So you could, you could paint it, but. I just don't think, I, I don't think putting that much money in the house that you can rent for a year makes any sense. That's just my personal opinion, but I don't have any construction sense, so.
Do you intend to enough their 14s or R22 units?
They're, they, you can't buy R22 units. You haven't been able to buy a R22 unit or put one in.
What's, what's in, what's in?
They're, I don't know what's in there now. I haven't looked to see if there are R22s or 14s. There will be 14s that go back in.
Yeah, they have to be now. But if you, all you're going to replace is the condenser outside. And then within three years, being on the ocean, David and everybody should know those units don't last but at five at the most. So it's, it's, it's something that replacing them is for residential purposes would be our best way to go for right now.
Well, okay, the mayor suggested that you could always do window units.
If, if you're not going to rent it.
If we're not going to rent it, yes.
You just want to preserve the building. $2,000 you can do it done with. But if you're going, if the, if the ventilation system needs to be replaced, you're not only talking about the inside unit, the outside unit, you got, the ducts have to be replaced to match the, the new units. So I mean, you're talking about a, you're talking about $15,000 or more. If you're talking about a penny, just for that.
Haven't got the estimates back yet?
Do tomorrow. Or 19th, she's, 18th or 19th. Ah, here's my list. Yes. Five o'clock, 19th.
I think this is my opinion. I think we could fix the house, paint it, fix the handrails, build steps, make it safe, rent it for the summer, get every dollar back. It's just my opinion. You can't rebuild it, can't make this happen. But you, I've been in it. It's livable, rentable, needs cleaned up. I absolutely think that the money we would spend on it to paint it, pressure wash it, build the steps, fix the handrails and fix the HVAC or bring it up, maybe not replace the ductwork and all you're talking about. But get it where it'll heat and cool because I wouldn't want to put a renter in there. They don't have any air conditioning. You know that's what's going to happen then. They're going to call somebody. And I think we get most of our money back. Maybe not all of it, but most of it. I don't think we'd be out that much. And at the last meeting, the best I remember, that's where we were heading. And we owe it to the people that live around that mess to clean it up. And if, as Jim was saying at the beginning of the meeting, if this turns into something we want to sell, we need to keep it up. And it'll be worth more money when you go to put it on the market.
I have a question for the board. Regardless of what the decision is on proceeding, would the board like for Mr. Woods to make the revision to the architectural renderings for the shower and the handicap bathroom that show, as, as Dr. Dyer suggested, showing the external entrances there because I'd, I'd hate to come back in six months and say, and then have to start back over with architect. We could wrap, we could put a bow on that and then be ready to go with the hardcore engineering subsequent, should the board decide to move forward with, with a more robust fix?
That'd be fine.
Yeah. We should go ahead and make the change, have the change made.
Mr. Wood, you understand what they're talking about?
Yeah, you want, you want to make that front area as like a just an open shower area.
So for clarification, are we just opening up the front of it or two sides? For clarification, are you just opening up just one side?
He said scoot that back on one side.
Like, like if you, if you take this, this side back.
Yes, sir.
My thing is like, my fault is to keep this door where nobody doing it, it's closed. Or you, or you open this.
I would, I would leave an open area. Okay. And the rest of it closed so it can be locked. Thank you.
We don't need a motion on that, do we? Can just consensus of the board. Is that okay?
I'd like to thank David for, for helping us with this. He, he came in on, on, on a request and he's, I think he's done a really good job of working with the staff. He's kept us informed and kept us in the loop. And I think he's done a really good job working with us.
Consent, I think it's a great, a good plan.
And just summary, let me, I know the people that are listening in didn't hear everything that was said in the room, but my understanding is the architect's going to go ahead and redraw per our discussion here. And then the air conditioning estimated price, Mr. Hewitt, you said that number's coming in tomorrow?
Friday, the 19th.
Friday?
19th.
Friday the night, okay.
Is that Thursday or Friday? Sorry. That's Thursday, the 19th, my bad.
Okay. All right. So next month, regular meeting, we'll have more information. And that's pretty much where we are. Okay. All right. Thank you all. All right, let's go to number 10. I'm sorry, we just finished number 10. Number 11, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. We have a, a request from the Tri Beach Fire Department to upgrade the Starfish Substation. David Robinson from Tri Beach is with us here. Doug Todd, the chief, had death and family, wasn't able to make it to. I provided the Fire Department's ask and wanted to get that in front of the board in order to determine the best way to go forward in addressing the matter.
Okay.
David, one, David Ward, Assistant Chief, with the Fire Department, on behalf of.
I'm sorry, I called you David Robinson.
That's okay. I'll, I'll forgive you.
I'm sorry.
David's a good guy.
Yes, certainly are. No, presentation.
Yeah. And I did. I'm going to leave this in confirmation. I know the person will have it, but come on, welcome to keep this. It might spark some questions you may have later. Just as a follow-up confirmation. I guess that you can see what we said. Well, I know we just finished the calendar here.
Thank you, Dave.
Just to kind of recap, obviously, it was a busy year for us in 2022. I've been here 16 years. It was the most calls that we've ever answered during my tenure here at 1,790. So just on the front page, I'll kind of give you synopsis. If it, if it triggers a question you want to ask us now, obviously, I can try to answer that or meet your question and answer to it later. But I did list the fire station locations, stations one, two, and three, because you'll see that referenced in the other documents as well there. We, the fire station, we're ultimately discussing at 572 Ocean Boulevard West. We do, I do have a list of equipment here that shows just the amount of assets, firefighting and rescue apparatus that we have, and then our personnel list. And we're currently operating with 16 full-time staff, eight part-time staff and nine volunteers. And we've been like most of the country, most of the states, seen a decrease in volunteer staff. That's been kind of a trend across the country for some time. It wasn't probably 10 years ago, we probably had 20 volunteers. Just a tremendous amount, as Jim could attest, there's a tremendous amount of training that goes in on an annual basis to keep all the certifications and things up. So that, that does put a, you know, pretty hard strain on volunteer folks that have to work somewhere else. And you could see our total hours for 22, 2022, as far as training was 4,669 and a quarter hours. Our folks are pretty busy throughout the year. I did list some call volumes and did some historical values here. So you can see all the way from 2018 to 22. Of course, the kind of anomaly in there is 2020, when COVID hit, we did not respond to a lot of first responder calls or EMS calls. So that number went down. But when it came back in 2021, it came up quite dramatically and, and has risen another 5% for 2022. I did list the calls that happened on Holden Beach on there, and you can see that same trend does follow on the island, that those calls went from, you know, 201 in 20, 2020 to 275 in 2021 and 280 in 2022. I did list the number of building fires out to the side for each of those years. The five that were in 2022 resulted from three separate incidents. The most notable being here on Ocean Boulevard West, where the three houses were damaged. That constitutes three of the five that are there. And then we had one on Ocean Boulevard East and then one farther down Ocean Boulevard West, near the third Settican House in that area. I did list below that our average response time for those years for each district. That's responded by Station One, Station Two and Station Three. The base, I mean, the most notable, I guess, difference between the station is stations one and three on the mainland have 24-hour staffing for 65 days a year, whereas the station on the island has typically been staffed from Memorial Day to Labor Day during the daytime hours, seven days a week. That's when most of the calls were traditionally happening. And we put the staff there. Our staff is traditionally following where the calls are. So wherever the most calls, we put the staff to try to alleviate that. But you can see on their list and all those years, and these are average first apparatus response times. So these are when the first fire truck or, or pickup arrives on the scene. And you can see that on Holden Beach, the response times are longer and have gotten longer over the last couple of years with that increase in call volume that has came along. The second page is just a detailed breakdown of responses that took place during the calendar year of 2022. The only exception to this is we keep separately calls that are in the corporate limits of Barnum Town. And I think it was 65 calls in Barnum Town for 2022. And their, and the average response time in that area is about five minutes or so. So it's, it falls in line with those, what you'll see at Station One, call volume. The highlighted yellow section on there is times when the fire station would have been staffed on the island. And for the most part, it, it is lower. You'll see that they, we did have such an increase in calls this year. And there's some notes down at the bottom. You can kind of see how those calls are transpiring. So it's a, a pretty tremendous amount of those calls that happened in the summertime months, but at nighttime when, when there was nobody at the fire station, those staff there. And then on the back page, just for reference, I did include a, basically a fire district map so you can kind of see the area we do protect. And then I put the fire station locations are marked in, marked in purple on there with a key. So you can kind of see, when you're looking at those other pages, if you're looking at call volume data, you can kind of see where those calls are happening at, just to go back for reference. So obviously, you know, the building around the island has got some age on it. It has been inundated with water several times, at least on the ground floor and the walls during, since Hurricane Matthew. And it doesn't have sleeping quarters in it, a place for our folks to sleep. And it doesn't have a place for a kitchen to prepare a meal. Our folks now are working, our staff now, we work three shifts of five. And they work 24 hours on, 72 hours off, and then they come back and work 48 hours on and then get 72 hours off. So they work, they spend a lot of time at one place. Basically, a third of their life is spent at the fire station if they work all their shifts. So you, you know, to, to get the most robust, you do need some type of place, a comfortable place for them to sleep, safe place for them to sleep, and of course, prepare their meals because we go out for meal every day. And the fire stations are kind of strategically located to provide the best response to those, those typical areas. So that's why our board felt, we can kind of see, you can see in the data that the calls are increasing, whether that be people moving here on a more permanent basis or more visitors, whatever that happens to be. But the call volumes are increasing. EMS has been the same thing. And I'm not sure if the police department has experienced some of the same stuff. And I don't, at least in our field, the trend is not for it to go the other way. It's probably going to continue to increase over the next several years. And so we just want to be ahead of the game and do some planning so that we can adequately provide protection to all the citizens and not just one group in a particular area. provide protection to all the citizens and not just one group in a particular area. And a little side note is, as the kind of loads, I know when you see 1,790 calls, you can kind of average that out per day. We did, out of that 1,790 calls, 396 of those calls were overlapping. Basically, 22% of those calls, we had more than one call going on at the same time. So our folks are, we have multiple stations going on to different calls at different locations, and that does pretty, you know, it puts a difficult strain at certain times of the year trying to answer all the calls. I have seen times where we'd have seven or nine calls almost going on at the same time if we had the type of storms and those type of things. The island being geographically located with the bridge on one end and such a long island, crews coming from on the mainland side have quite a long drive on a street with a lower speed limit to get to an emergency-type call. And you can see, you know, just at averages on there, one to two minutes is not uncommon. It takes longer just to get to, get over here, just because you're riding on a street that's 35 miles an hour versus out where it's more rural, where it's 45 or 55 miles an hour. It does take much longer to get somewhere. I'd be glad to have to answer any questions someone might have.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
First of all, we all thank you for what you and your firemen do, firewomen and firemen.
There we have both, absolutely.
Whatever the proper way to say it. There are plans ongoing about building a new facility at the existing station number one?
On Sabbathon Road. Yes, sir. We did get all the way through the engineering process in 2022. The folks that don't know, that station was built in 1968 and have been added on to several times. And we do co-house a paramedic ambulance from Brother County that provides service to this area. So we had looked at replacing that because we had outgrown it as well, and it had multiple roof leaks and those type of things. It got sent out for bid, and bids came back much higher than what our budget was at a particular time. And so our board has, at least in the short term, delayed the project, trying to wait for the market to come back down before they move forward with construction. But it still is in the plan. There's, there's no plans not to build it at this point.
Follow up that question. I remember whenever the town acquired the property that the building is located on, I was involved in that. And my recollection is that we had, we, the town, had a proximity within like 100 yards of where that building is, is where that building had to be. And I'm just wondering what the current rules and regulations are in regards to the required location. Do we have to go back to that location and remodel it, tear it down, rebuild it, or are there options to relocate?
That would take a little bit more study, and we can, we've done some of that with the fire station on the mainland, with the GIS department at the county, trying to determine mileage. There are mileage requirements, and currently, to get the maximum benefit, you have to be within five miles of the fire station road miles. Between the five and the six mile range, you can get what's considered a minimal rating, which would be a nine rating, but you cannot go any lower than that. And we are currently a three. So if you're not familiar with the system, we were rerated last year and lowered from a four to a three, and it's basically a 10-point system, one being the best you could be possibly score, 10 being the worst. And we were, we were rated at a three last time, so that's very, very good. It definitely helps people on their insurance premiums. So we would need to study that more in depth to determine exactly where it could be placed as far as that goes. And just kind of, if you're looking at mileage, the far as you could go east end, which is in, on Serendio Lane, is 3.9 miles from Station 2. The father's address west at 1365 is 4.1 miles. So there probably is a little bit of playroom one way or the other there, but not a tremendous amount.
I'd like to ask you officially to get that answer for us, because as you ask us to help you improve your facility, we need to know where and what options we have.
Yes, sir. We can do that. That's not a problem.
Looking at your map, it seems to be pretty much in the center of our island.
Yes, sir, it is.
Is, if it's staffed 24 hours a day, will it need, will it also answer calls on the mainland?
Absolutely. It does, it does, how we generally work, so lower acuity calls, so if it's something minor, only the station in that particular area answers the call. But if it becomes a major incident such as a fire or a major motor vehicle collision, then, then all stations will go to that particular area to do that. We even have to utilize fire stations as far away as Shiloh to get enough people to fight a house fire these days to do it safely. So it does, as it already does, it does answer calls over here. So if we'll say that Station 1, which is on Sabbathon Road, was on a call and another call came out and that crew, the station was staffed and they were the closest ones, they would answer that call. We do provide, send the closest, closest available unit to that.
This could be a great opportunity. That building is part of our hazard mitigation plan, and just like the lift stations, it's recognized as being an issue in the town as a critical facility. And it opens us up to a lot of things, but it, it helps us also with the CRS program as it is recognized in there as something that we need to improve or can improve. So if we decide to do that, it's going to help us at that level at some, some degree. But it, but you need to understand, it is recognized in our hazard mitigation plan as our critical facility, which means that it's important to the town. I'd like to add that, I'd like to add, and I think you touched on it some, and as, you know, somebody's working in the planning department, you need to understand that I think our demographics has changed a little bit. When we did the improvements when I first got here and we moved them over there, it was because there was very little going on during the winter, but that is changing every day. All you, all you have to do is ride down the road. So I think it's important to know that we have, not only do they, their times are going to change because there's more traffic on the road, but we actually have more people here to service during the winter. It's almost like the rental season's extending as well. So I would just like to put that in there from a staff standpoint, that we see no negatives in this. Just like the lift stations, that fire station has issues with how it was built and the location it was built.
Well, that's one of my questions. If, if, there's a, there's a comment made about flood resistance, and that location, flood resistance is, it's by a canal. It's, it's, it's hard to make it flood resistant. And I think there's a lot of discussion that has to happen here for, with detail. I actually wonder if there couldn't be a small group carved out of staff and a couple commissioners and have a couple special meetings with the fire department and get into real details to bring back some recommendations, more clarity.
I would 100% want to be involved in that.
Of course, yeah.
You need to also understand, and I'm not saying this is a cha-ching, but it's a critical facility, which means there's probably money out there to bring it out of the flood zone if we start looking for it. So there may be some money to help once we get a conceptual design and that kind of thing. I want to be involved in this because I've been involved with that fire station since the day, and it, we've spent money down there every time it needs to be fixed because it flooded, it was never built correctly. The way it was built, I assume they built it at that time because they could and the way they did, but you couldn't build it like that now, and it's recognized as being a problem.
Another important thing is the equipment that was used back in those days was a lot different than what's down there these times. So anyway, any more conversation?
Well, again, I've got a, I'm going to agree with Pat. There is a little more, we need to put a little more effort in this before we make a decision. It needs to be an educated decision that, that we can make a decision on. And having, like she said, maybe a couple of commissioners, some of, some of the town's staff, not a committee, whatever you want to call it, where we could do a little brainstorm, get some of the answers that we have, that Alan has asked, that, get all this information in. And as Tim noted, being a very necessary part of Holden Beach, which we're all, again, thank you for your fine work here on the island. We need to, we just need to, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right and make an education, educated decision. So that would be, again, a suggestion to, and I don't mean kick it down the road, I mean let's go ahead and get it.
Get it done.
Get it done, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
All right, Lieutenant Dearworth, number 12 on the agenda. Mr. Hewitt?
That's why I was still sitting there. I could read.
Is, is the board going to direct the assemblage of a committee to work with the fire department to bring back information for the plan?
Okay, I'd like to suggest that we get the information from Mr. Ward. We got to know what our options are before we go much further.
Okay. And then come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
This battery's dying, just so you know, Heather. They'll probably make it through, because I'm going to try to be short. The, um...
You want to use this one? Just use that one for right now. I got this one right here.
Those of you that are listening, we're having to change batteries in the microphone. Bear with us.
Oh. If you notice, the report's pretty standard for this time of year, except for the 45 water and sewer calls. And honestly, or actually, that number's a hair low because almost all of the call-by phones and a significant part of the 13 meet with complainants were also associated with water leaks back over Christmas. Somewhere over 60 houses, majority of which we've been told were winterized. I just put that out there for you to take that wherever you need to go with it, but some of them may not have been properly winterized. A lot of them were outdoor showers, so maybe they weren't drained down, maybe the water was just turned off. So something maybe we could be a little bit more proactive with next season. The, the weapons charge that you see on there, the weapons call, armed with gunner knife, was in Assista County. Okay? That's, that's why there's no associated incident report. Couple pages beyond that. We had one parking ticket and one fireworks call over 4th of July. One citation for fireworks there was.
New Year's Eve?
New Year's. What did I say?
Fourth of July.
Can you tell I wanted to warm up?
It was so foggy.
I see the chief made a note, or somebody made a note, no LSV parking, so no low-speed vehicles, but... Any questions?
I have a question. Frank, have you had, has there been any uptick in people taking construction equipment or construction components for this?
Not that's been reported. Is the only way I can truthfully answer that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for what you do, Frank.
And all of your department members. Mr. Evans, inspections.
I was going to say good afternoon, but I've been up here a couple of times. Last week I said, oh, last month I said there was a downtick in the number of new construction, new residential constructions. We had six come in the last two days. So back up. Our report's pretty much normal, and I'll just run through it. Right now, we have 30, we actually have 40, we have one we just processed, but we have 40 new home permits that are active. We have the open permits that we are working on, it's 321. We've issued 18 that are over $30,000 for last month. That doesn't include anything that's under that, which there were quite a few. We've got 20 permits that are waiting pickup that have been processed and finished, which, for a total of 380 permits that we've actually touched this month. We have two that are in review right now. We have 14 that have been submitted. We've got none in KAMA. We've got KAMA caught up, and so we're, that's a big plus because that helps us push the plan review a little faster. The zoning permits that we've issued were 10. The KAMA permits issued were six, and we had one KAMA violation. So the permits that were serviced for this inspection month, which we touched to go out and do inspections, were 82, and we made 289 total inspections. We've spent, and I'm just going to estimate, but I, I think we've spent, between me and Rhonda and Carrie, we've had probably over 60 contact hours, possibly already, for this year for, for education. We, we, as usual, we are preparing for next year, and Carrie holds one certification, and right now she's taking a class for her second one. Once again, we are lucky to have the staff that we have. They're doing a wonderful job. It's getting better every day and getting easier over there. And that's the report.
Any questions from the commissioners? If not, we express our appreciation to you and your staff, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hewitt, number 14.
Yes, sir. Last month, the board's tasker to the staff presented, we were presented with about 10 questions regarding the parking program. We assembled a staff group along with Jim Varner and Jack DeSantos from Auto Connect to go through those and assembled for you. I don't know how you want to go through the answers, but these are the feedback that we're providing the board to those questions.
It's a pleasure, the board. Again, we, we, before, we need to make some recommendations and, and changes to the parking program before we get the parking program started again this year. I think there is, we need to go through some of these and, and kind of pinpoint where the board stands on them. And what I'd like to do is start with the first one, making, making possible changes to the way we handle boat traders with no tags. I think implement the following proposal. I think, David, you've got that pretty much nailed down as to what's going to take place there.
Yeah, and we could bring that contract back to the board, that contract amendment back to the board next month.
Yes, sir, if you will.
Do we want to just vote item by item so that as we go through it, we just, we agree, you know, if the board says yes, that's how we want to do it?
That sounds great, Pat. So number one, the way that it has been implemented, the following proposal, do we have consensus that that needs to, to be done that way? Any objections?
That seems like a good solution.
All right, the number two, discuss a possible 24-hour limit on authorizing, authorized right-of-way parking. Evidently, speaking with Lieutenant Dearworth here before the meeting, and David earlier today, this is not an issue and can just be pretty much taken off the list of to-do things.
Let me interrupt you just a minute, if I may. Let, let me interrupt you just a minute, if I may. Officer, if you, if you'd like at any time to make a comment on what we're talking about, feel like you can chime in here.
If, if I can just say, lankily, I, I've read through it and, and had conversations with Chief Dixon with it, and if there's a consensus throughout the document.
So your department supports it the way it is? Okay. Thank you, that's...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, number three, uh, discuss, uh, possibly having parking fee for the, uh, free parking for the two festivals in the area of any, uh, permitted event. I believe that was, uh, already addressed in some of the, uh, ordinance, David, so that's pretty much took care of itself. All right. Number four...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Number four is to discuss and give each homeowner, not empty lot owners, one free yearly pass before April 1st, uh, of each year. Uh, that's something that, uh, has been tossed around. I think there was a, in, in speaking with the Auto Connect people, it, it's, the only issue will be documenting that they own the property. And, you know, I don't think, and in, talking with, uh, professional parking people, they don't see that it would be an issue with the, the people on the island filling up parking places. They have a parking place at their home. I don't, I don't think that that'll be an issue. However, the, as far as it being free to cover any administrative, uh, requirements, uh, there's a couple of ideas that have been passed out, uh, a $20 fee for residents, $50 fee for residents, or $50 off of the, the standard amount. What would the board like to do on that?
How would you determine that's a high man or not someone else?
It's, it's an administrative process that we would have to, to detail and to refine exactly how that, how that's done. Right now, um, I mean, I have tax scrolls and water scrolls and the differentiation on who's a, who's a property owner, um, I mean, that would have to be detailed. We haven't done that before, hadn't, hadn't worked with Jim on it.
Are they gonna be assigned to automobile?
They'll be assigned to a tag, yes. It's not necessarily where we give out a sticker like a hurricane. It will be just like somebody paying their $150 a year yearly pass. It would be done to that license tag, and the same with the yearly pass. They can only be changed one time, uh, during that calendar year.
So how would you know that that tag is actually registered to the homeowner?
That would be what we would have to determine through, they would have to show some documentation that they own the property.
Other islands that I've seen, they actually, people have to come in and they have to bring proof of their vehicle registration and their ownership. There's administrative here. You know, I, I've had about, I've had a handful of people discuss this, that they, they, you know, don't feel that residents should have to pay for parking. Again, we go back to, this island is different than a lot of the ones that have free parking and even have designated, um, owner-only spaces, that you can get very, very far from the beach. And on this island, there aren't that many people very, very far from the beach. That's why we did set, try to set up some of the golf cart parking for people to be able to get closer. I, I really struggle with changing this. The way that we've had it this past year, um, I don't think that it is that onerous. And again, a lot of people on this island, it's just a short walk for them to get to the beach anyway. I, I just, it, it just seems to me to be an added, not compli, it's more than complication. I, I just question whether or not we need to do it. And I always get into the question about, we have different, we have, we have different funded walkways, accesses, different things, and different organizations, agencies, whatever you wanna call them, have different rules about how you can differentiate between residents and non-residents and be fair. And I, what sticks in my head is reading, it always seems to be 50% is, is where they say it's a fair delineation. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just not convinced that we need to go there to provide free, to provide residents or owners a free pass.
I think it's too early into the program to make that type of change. I think we need to go through another season or two before we can explore that and see if it's work. My fear would be, if it's not registered to a homeowner, that it's gonna get used in the wrong way.
Mr. Murdock?
The only thing I can comment on this, I'm also hesitant on, to make this call, um, we, when you compare us to, say, Oak Island, who's getting ready to implement paid parking, just, just as Pat said, there's places on Oak Island, you're a half a mile from the beach, obviously they need, or would like to drive to the beach to park, they would need it. And if that were the case here, I would be in, certainly in favor of giving the owners that benefit. Um, with that being said, we are one of the only places that don't give our homeowners some benefit, so what that benefit would be, um, maybe they could buy a half-price pass, um, that would seem reasonable, or maybe even less to use. I, I'm just thinking of the canal streets and the LSV parking, that people taking their stuff from the end of the canal streets to the to, top of the canal streets for those who wanted it in the beginning, they would benefit from it. I, I live here, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take up a paid parking space. Um, I, I mean, I would just walk to the beach, and I, I live a good ways away, so it, it's a mute, I like, I mean, I, I could go either way. I, I could take it or leave it. I would, I would like to think that the residents here deserve a discounted rate of some sort, but if, if we wanna just go another year till we get, you know, we're still trying to get our legs on us on this thing. If we could turn around on us and backfire horribly if the residents of Holden Beach did use those parking spaces, and you went, uh-oh, now we don't have any parking all of a sudden. So that would impact everybody from the mainland that would wanna come over, and, and we're trying to limit the, the impact of the big, the parking spaces and the parking lots on the island, keep it to a minimum. If 50 residents used our parking lots in any given day, it would impact our, our ability to park, um, people that would wanna come from other places, so my gut would be to, if, if there's some way to easily provide a discounted rate, half-price or something like that to the residents, I would be in favor of that, but I don't think free's the answer. I think free may get abused and, and cause us maybe some larger problems. We, we need the limited amount of parking that we have, and here, we don't want parking in 800 block, and we don't want another 100 cars at Block Q, and you hear all that, but if people start parking there, like, if everybody drove to the pier, you know, from all around the island, the residents, the pier parking lot would be full in a minute, and then, then what do we do? So that's my hesitation.
Well, let's wait a year then, and, and, and let's wait a year and see if, if we can come up with a reasonable plan and get some input from our, uh, from the, the, the people of Holden Beach and see what their, their thoughts on it are. But, uh, holding it off another year, we, this is, this is our first go at the paid parking, so it was just a, a suggestion that was brought to my attention and I wanted to vet it, so we can hold it off another year. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
All right, the, the, as far as the detail for the revenue for the first year, I think it was an attachment added to our agenda tonight that gave a, a reasonable breakdown with that, that was, I believe was good enough. Uh, discussed, uh, the possibility of increasing the fees. Uh, again, we made a decision to start out where we did. However, with, uh, Oak Island and other, some other locations, uh, implementing paid parking, if we increase it to $4 per hour, $20 a day, 80 a week, and 150 for the yearly, I don't think that's gonna impact anybody adversely adding another dollar. And again, that's where we originally had started, when we talked about it, and we said we was gonna let one year get under our belts first. So I think moving them to 4, 20, 80, and 150 would be a, a, a good move.
Well, what Oak Island voted is, is more than what we're proposing, so for us to go...
Right, they're $5.
For us to go to what was originally planned that we took down last year to give people a chance to adjust, I mean, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to increase it to take into account various things. So we're really just, we're really just in year two doing what the target was for year one. Is there any way to phase it in halfway?
I think it would be, it's easier, I believe we'd be better off just leaving it as, as suggested here, 4, 20, and 80, and 150.
Keep in mind, it was originally suggested day one at $5, and we weren't having any part of that. Um, I think this is the middle of the road for what other, other places are doing. I, I really don't think we need to, to look at going to $5, certainly. I think this is more than fair, this is...
Okay.
I got, I've, I got a question about the fee schedule. Um, there's really five fees charged there, um, and it's specific to the, uh, currently it's 125 for one vehicle for a, a, an annual pass, and the two licensed vehicles, this is primarily for the trailers, it's a double that at 250, so is, is, is there an, a desire to make the two vehicles be 300 since existing one is a multiple to two?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Um, I have, I've been a boater all my life, and we, boats take up, boat and trailers take up more room. The untagged trailer problem is always gonna be a untagged trailer problem, hard to enforce and that type of thing. We hopefully are gonna have designated boat and trailer parking spaces. If, I'm just honest out there, and I don't know how many we're gonna have or if it's gonna be done by, by boating season, or if we're gonna continue to allow them to, I don't know how the parking situation's gonna be at Block Q, is what I'm trying to get out of my mouth. But if we, let's say we had 25 boat and boat-trailer parking spaces designated, I would like to see those be at a lesser rate. Um, just, just because it, it's, it's a recreational activity, um, lots and lots of people enjoy them, and I, I didn't like, you know, the opinion that people aren't coming and enjoying our water and our waterways 'cause of the impact of a parking fee, um, as they, they do have to pay twice, basically. So if we got to that point, and I don't know if we can do it now or not, but if we got to the point where we actually had boat and trailer parking spaces, I would like to see them less than $300.
And I agree, when we get to that point, I, I think it's unlikely we're gonna get to that point before season starts. We can always, we can always amend, we can always amend the, the fee schedule and the ordinance and figure out how to go forward with that if somehow it happens mid-season. But again, I think going into season, we need to just deal with what we have right now. But I agree with you, when we have actual slots, we can look at having a special rate for boat and trailer.
Boat, truck and trailer, okay. But for now, we're gonna go 4, 20, 80, 150, 300. Okay. Number seven, uh, discuss possibly charging over the paid, uh, paid parking dates of operation. Uh, it was suggested, uh, April 1st through November 30th, but I've been discussing this with, uh, some of my commissioners, fellow commissioners, one at a time. Uh, they felt that the, uh, April 1st through October 31st would be best.
I think we leave it as it is, April to October.
Same here. I'm good with that, too. Okay. April to October, first available to the end of October. Uh, discuss the possibility of having our parking contractor install the signage where necessary to reduce confusion, especially along the marsh streets, streets and that sort of stuff. Uh, again, yeah, the, the town said it, it has not been an issue, no issue was found, but allow an Auto Connect to our vendor to install signs where they see problem areas or suggest installing the signs, along with the, uh, approval of our staff, town staff. I don't see any reason that we can't let Auto Connect be in charge of the signage.
And, and there are issues at times. Last year in the summer, there was a marsh street that somebody took down with no parking sign that Auto Connect had put up, and I was the one who noticed it. And it, it was down for a good week before we got it back up. So things do happen. Um, I would like to see robust, permanent signs on all of those marsh streets, um, that have no parking beside at any time, because those are wetland areas, and we've said there's no parking, uh, and those are the signs that tend to, to kinda get misplaced occasionally.
Yes, sir. Chief and I spoke about this in a little bit more detail, and as, as the staff's recommendation says in there, um, the ordinance and the direction kinda pushes that to Mr. Hewitt and allows staff to internally handle those signs. Um, what Chief and I talked about as a suggestion was, everybody's seen the green signs with the barcode that you approved earlier. What we figured out after they were made and installed is they're about a quarter of the size they should've been for Ocean Boulevard. Um, so that, that's something that's gonna be mentioned, and then maybe relocating those. I do understand that, back to the original ordinance, it's been suggested to, to eliminate all of the no parking signs on Ocean Boulevard, maybe, just on Ocean Boulevard, because the ordinance wants those other signs are replaced, so they'll be periodically staged and, and not specifically say no parking. Um, and there were already approved nine, no parking nine to five, April to November, they have not been installed yet, so. I know there was some kind of plan that Chief and I have talked about, and Mr. Varner was involved as well, so.
Well, is there an issue with Auto Connect installing the signs?
Not with us. That, I mean, that's been more, that would be more Mr. Clemmons's department.
That would take, uh...
April through November, I suppose.
April to October.
You said, did you just say they had April through November on the sign?
Date, I, I might've misspoken.
Oh, okay. Might've misheard.
Well, is, is, again, consensus of the board to let Auto Connect handle the signage? Good with you? Seems to be a yes.
And, and Jim Varner is good with that?
Yes.
Yes. I, I have a question in regards to that. Mr. Clemmons, to send people out there to post hole diggers and just dig holes in right of way, how about the, um, utility lines and water lines and, what, what kind of control do we have in regards to that?
Right, well, when you guys put a sign in, do y'all locate, y'all call nine-one, eight-one-one to locate? Yes, sir. Well, yes, sir. I, I believe, with his experience, I believe he'll be okay.
Well, Chris, what is your preference?
Okay, all right.
Consensus of the board is yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see, is to discuss eliminating.
I'd like a little more guidance on that. So we're gonna delegate it to the contractor to install them where he deems fit.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Working with.
Working with town staff, if they have.
At least the police department.
Yeah, at least. And I think Jim works with you guys pretty closely, doesn't he?
I wouldn't want him to. I would want your blessing.
Oh, I don't think Jim is just gonna go randomly. He's gonna, he's gonna work with the appropriate staff for what he wants to do, so.
He wanted clarification, so we, auto and at least the police department.
Yes, okay. Discuss eliminating unauthorized right-of-way parking. Again, we create more problems than it's intended to solve. I think, I think we should maybe leave it as it is for right now. It would, you know, what it is, is basically complaint oriented now to where if there is a complaint of someone parking in the right way, that's when the, our officers take care of it. So I think that's working pretty well as it is. Okay, we'll just leave that one as is then. And discuss the possibility of having the contractor and town staff do a street-by-street review, which I, you know, is basically the, you know, the canal streets, all the ones that would probably be the most important to do and make sure that everybody's on, on the same page. I think maybe if we did that before the season started, it would ease us into the next year's parking season without any bumps in the road, everybody would be on the same page.
Well, doesn't number eight solve number ten? Having him install signage where necessary to reduce confusion?
Well, you ever do, again, have to do with this, the assessment would allow them to, to get on the same page. So I guess it's basically the same thing.
I, I just think, I think it would be wise to, to have a, before April check, just to make sure some signs haven't gone missing as well. That, you know, everything that was there and is meant to be there is, is still there. And then if there's anything added, you know, you can get it added early.
So I guess the consensus is yes again?
And again, I think it would be probably Jim working with the police department.
Yes.
Which you guys worked together last year to come up with the grand scheme that we finally implemented.
And it was, I think it went, as a whole, the, the whole program went exceptionally well due to the cooperation of the town staff, including the police department and our maintenance department.
I, there is a suggestion as well to remove the no parking sign from here to corner signage, I guess because it causes confusion. It's, it's at the very end of ten. I, I thought that when we do that no parking from here to corner, one of the reasons that was, that was put up was to make it, that's where the emergency vehicle turn kind of critical area is. And so it's, it's like really, the, the important area, so if somebody wants to park illegally, at least don't park illegally here.
And the, the intent was exactly that. However, what we're, what we've learned is that people don't understand what we're saying. And they're assuming that if they park on the correct side of the no parking here to corner, that it's then legally allowed, and then they get a citation. So, and, and that's what I was speaking of earlier about picking up the no parking signs. Those are also causing a lot of issues on Ocean Boulevard, I say a lot. There's, we, we see issues on Ocean Boulevard as well, because the no parking signs have dwindled over the years with all the construction and, and for various reasons. It, it is probably the right idea, because of the way the ordinance is written, to pull all those up except for some very specific locations. And then only have the designated LSV, because where the no parking here to corner is gonna affect are the residential side streets and then Avenue A B, Doonescape, the, the public area of Doonescape Drive, the short section. That's really the only place those signs are, are creating an issue. The only possibility, and I hope I'm not stepping on my own feet here, would be the crab shrimp street area, the three, except for Ferry, because there is no LSV spaces there. So there shouldn't be any confusion, but it's still no parking during the daytime. It's no parking nine to five on those. They can, the residents can park at night, so. I know, we may have to work, play that one by ear and see what happens with the signage down there. That would be the only exception I could think of, is those three streets, though. Did that clarify that suggestion or make it worse?
No, it, 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 it does. I just remember why the signs were put in, and I wanted to make sure that it wasn't adding risk that we would get cars parking close to the main road, and then we have an emergency vehicle that can't make the turn. But that, that's a tow-away zone, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not just a we ticket you, it's a we tow you.
Or a push it out of the way.
Okay.
And, and the, the historical data from last year, I can only say is the issues were outside of that forty-five-foot zone or forty-two-foot zone, it was outside of that zone. They were on the other side of where the sign would be, because people thought it was okay to park.
Well, we can always put them back if we find they have to go back.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I get it. It's worth, it's, if they cause more confusion than they're worth, let's see what happens without them.
And we talking about locating, some of those posts could be used for the other signs you're told not installing, so there wouldn't be digging.
Again, thank you, Frank. David, did that, that, that's, that's all of them, sir.
Mr. Hewitt, you got anything to ask or say?
I'm good.
Everybody else ready to move on?
Yes, sir, thank you, David.
All right, are we on number fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hewitt, is still you?
At the December meeting, the Board of Commissioners asked for a budget and quarterly meeting calendar to be established. We're continuing to suggest that we have the meetings at five-thirty, so what we've done is prepared, five-thirty in the evening. So what I've done is prepared a proposed calendar for your consideration. The first goals and, the first meeting would be the February twenty-third. Goals and workshops, you'd ask for three budget meetings, which would follow on March the sixteenth, April the twentieth, and June the first. The quarterly meetings will happen coincidentally with the budget meeting on the March sixteenth and also again on June fifteenth, which would be at the Budget Public Hearing Meeting, which is a statutory framing timeframe. And then the last two quarterly meetings are September twenty-first and December twenty-first.
Those dates all work for me.
But they've, you give it a, I think it's enough advanced warning as to when the dates will be. Do we need a motion to approve the budget and quarterly meeting dates? I make a motion, we approve the budget and quarter, quarterly meeting dates as written?
Second.
Any discussion? Bear with me just a sec. There's some of those dates I'm not gonna be able to attend, but you guys can carry on. So, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? See now, Ms. Mayor of Clerk. Page two of the agenda, number sixteen. Ms. Pat?
Oh, yeah. I was just gonna remind everybody that typically when we do the objectives, the procedure is to put together what you want your objectives to be and supply them to the town clerk, and then she puts them all together and we score them. What I was going to suggest this year is let's start with everything that we already have delineated as priority projects that we're building a plan around. Let's not reinvent the wheel around that, around that. Start with that as the core, and then add the things that you think are extremely important for the next fiscal year to that. But we're all gonna start with the same basic, these are the objectives of the things that we're working on. So we don't have to create a full document of everything that we're thinking is a priority for next year, because a lot of it is already designated.
And I agree, our list last time was, was pretty full, and most of those are not complete and are still at the same priority level, so that would be a good starting point.
And hopefully, we're not gonna add too many more.
Correct.
For the next fiscal year.
Don't worry, sir.
Okay. So we would.
When do you want those?
Yeah. Heather, when would you want those with the meeting being on February twenty-third? How much in advance would you want our lists, so you could combine?
I would say if I could get them two weeks before, because I'd have to put the agenda, pack it out before and get them all together. So two weeks prior to the twenty-third, that would work for you guys.
February ninth? Yeah?
Okay.
Would it be a good idea maybe to have, ask if Heather would send us the, the list as it stands now? Or are we, so we could look at it so we don't send the, the same ones over and over again?
Absolutely, I'll send that out to you.
Thank you. And then, and on that, when you send it, put, I have to have a response by February ninth, please, Heather.
Or else, yeah.
I sure will.
You through with that? Number seventeen, Mr. Clemmons.
It's a battery check. Good evening. As directed by the Board of Commissioners, staff was listed, was requested to solicit qualifications for firms for engineering services developing a system-wide asset inventory and assessment of the town's water system with a specific goals of evaluating the adequacy of the distribution, fire flow, storage, and the need for a second water tower. Attachment one is actually a copy of that request that we sent out. The submission deadline was January the fourth, twenty-twenty-three. The town received three responses from RFQ, McGill and Associates, Green Engineering, and Withers and Revel. Attachments two through four are those firms, which are included for your review in accordance with the Federal Uniform Guidance Staff Prepared Ranking Sheet. Attachment five, if the board makes a selection of a firm, they can direct staff to bring a contract back with consideration at next board meeting. Other than that, that's, that all I got.
Comments from commissioners? Questions, comments?
Well, we were given a, an attachment to make our recommendations. Should we pass those recommendations to Heather in that, so we can have that decision as to.
Do you need to have her come through?
Yes, if you could put your name about mine, please. And then I'm gonna ask Chrissy to do the favor, my eyes are being a little crazy. So I'm gonna have her tally them, so I don't read them wrong. Do you mind?
Speaking of eyes being crazy, I both need to dial, dial three when I come. Bye-bye, I'm getting quite right even.
You guys wanna move on while she's adding up those big numbers? Number eighteen, Mr. Hewitt?
Heather's the human resources officer.
Sorry, I could pay attention, and Chrissy can count if you want to, sir, and I promise I'll pay attention. It's up to you.
The board asked for a salary analysis or study to be performed regarding all of the town positions. We have done that and are presenting that analysis this evening under, undercover of the memo that's included. The criteria that has been developed has utilized surveying-like communities that are close by, coastal communities, to establish proposed new salary ranges in addition, in addition to new salary rates for employees. The specific methodology proposes to take those employees that are below the new minimums up to the new market minimums, and then those that are below the midpoints to take them to the new market midpoints, and then those employees that are above the new market midpoints, but not at the maximums, they will not receive an adjustment. So there's an included, as attachments, all the supporting data for that to include the proposed finance officer's description. There is a budget amendment attached to fund the revisions to the pay plan and the personnel salary changes. It's recommended that the effective date be one January of twenty-three. The annual total cost all in is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, with half of that being with, the effective date is one January of twenty-three, being a hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. Also, as part of that is the classification and pay plan update, along with the specific associated salary changes for individuals and the town manager's contract revision. So if, in order to put this into place, the board would need to approve all three of the details that are outlined in the memo, and just realize that there'll be a follow-on action should you do so. That would be the execution of an employment agreement with a new finance officer. That would be the execution of an employment agreement with the new finance officer.
David, will that require individual motions on each one or can that be done?
You can, you can approve all three of them as presented in the memo. You can, all three of them in total, one, one motion.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve all three.
Second, discussion. I want to say something since we're at discussion. I want to, to bring it to everybody's attention that doesn't have this packet. What's in front of us is the pay scales from, on average, of eight surrounding communities. We have grossly been underpaying our staff, most of the staff. I want to thank personally the staff for sticking with us during that period of time. I was sitting on the board, I was my first walked into a MAP study that, that said these people should be paid this and these people should be paid that and so on and so forth. When, I think it might have been at my very first meeting. But when you look at surrounding communities and then you look at what our individuals here, our hardworking people are being paid, this has been a long time coming, a long three years for a lot of people. And with the cost of living increases and stuff that all of us have absorbed, I'm very happy to see that this is on the table.
It has been a long time coming. Again, we were thrust into it. My first meeting was a budget meeting and it was really a difficult time for me to understand where everybody was at. But we've got some really good people. We don't want to lose them to our surrounding municipalities just because of our poor pay. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction.
And I'd like to point out that part, a big part of what kicked this off was our desire, since we do have financial expertise in staff, other than our town manager, and Daniel has been doing an excellent job. What really started this was the board's desire to separate finance responsibilities, finance officer responsibilities from town management. Town management is a lot more than it was five and ten years ago. We have a lot of things going on that need the town manager to focus on. Separating the finance officer duties are going to give our town manager the needed time to handle what a town manager needs to handle with all of those priorities and headaches. So we have really a mini reorganization that happened and it just was a good time to also do a pay evaluation. So I think that this is coming at a good time. It's been a rough year for everybody with inflation. This is a catch-up and this is well-deserved.
Any more comments or questions? Do we have a motion in a second?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Madam Clerk. All righty. The results are in and Green Engineering will be our engineering firm that you just voted on. As verified by the town clerk.
Well, then I, then I guess a motion would be in order now. A motion to direct staff to recognize Green Engineering can bring back a, to the board of commissioners, a, or contract for consideration. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Again, Madam Clerk. Okay, are we ready to go to nineteen? Ms. Pat?
Okay. Our town has, is, let's just say we're, we're accumulating properties and facilities that I believe we've gotten to the point where a facility, and I'll, I'll call it equipment, assessment schedule should be put together that, that ensures that facilities and equipment that the public uses frequently have a regular formal assessment by defined parameters. And they can be specific to the type of facility or piece of equipment you're talking about. If you're going to evaluate a picnic table for, is it going to hold together for the year? That's different than saying, have we checked how the pavilion is and, you know, where it stands in terms of needing work or is it, is it clear? So I'm proposing that, that we consider to put together a facility, public equipment, assessment program, but the first step would be for us to ask the town manager to organize a list of relevant properties, facilities, and equipment that are highly used by the public and just a suggested frequency of assessment for those that we can then discuss. I, I proposed April. If the town manager needs more time to do that, that's fine. This is something that we just need to develop over the next six to eight months so we get a program in place. There's a lot of stuff online about, there are companies that do things, but there's also templates online that are examples of the kind of general assessment you do and it depends on the facility and how heavily you go into it. But you don't have to start from scratch on this as we proceed. So I'm just asking the board for consensus that we request the town manager to organize a list of our facilities and equipment that are used by the public and how frequently they should be assessed for adequacy and safety. And then we can have a further discussion later this year.
It's, it's fine with me. I think that, I'm sorry, I'm not a commissioner.
No, I was going to ask you.
I, I think that between Chris Clemmons, myself, and Christie, we can, we can develop a list of town facilities and, and come back with some suggestions on, on how to better organize our management efforts of those and upkeep.
Thank you, David. I think it would be, provide advantage, widely looking wise, possibly to make sure those are taken care of.
All right, since Mr. Hewitt agrees to do that, can we move on?
Yep.
All right, number twenty. Madam Clerk?
The Board of Commissioners has a commissioner serving on the audit committee, so that commissioner is elected every January. You guys can continue with the same one, which is Commissioner Cortowski, or you can select another person. So you could do it by ballot, which I gave you, or by, whatever you guys would like to do.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue to allow, be our commissioner on the audit committee, please.
Congratulations, Pat.
Thank you so much for asking me ahead of time, guys.
We know you love to do it.
It's okay.
All right, is that consensus of the board?
Does somebody else want it?
Same page.
Well, thank you. I think you're doing a wonderful job, Pat.
Same page job is yours.
Okay.
All right. We're going to go to number twenty-one, public comments on anything you want to talk about. If you will raise your hand and be recognized and come to the podium. Anybody in here want to say something good or bad or in-between about anything, except your husband or your wife? All right, we're going to move on to town managers report.
Yes, sir. This month includes the budget report as of the end of the second quarter, December the thirty-first. Going to go through some highlights of our operational accounts, those, or operational funds, those being our general fund, our water and sewer fund, the beach parks access and recreation trust fund, and canal dredging. Highlights, the short version is that all of our funds are in the black. Main, the main revenues that are collected, like the ad valorem tax, are of course ad valorem sewer capital and canal dredging. And it was a bit alarming to me when I looked at them compared to the, the same time last year, that all three of those were running about half of where they were this time last year. So I go, what, what's up with that? And I think it's more of a coincidence that does have a cause. We, we checked again today and there, all of those are in the seventy-five percent range. If you remember, it was a calendar, the way that the holidays fail, and we think that the, the mail just happened, the check was in the mail kind of thing. So we didn't receive those revenues before the end of December and they came in the subsequent week after that. So it may be five percent lower than what it was last year for all three of those. Doesn't really concern me now that I've looked back and, and reflected. If we, we should probably be in the neighborhood of ninety percent on all of those three by the end of January. If it's not there, I'll be certainly bringing it back to you to, to talk about it. But I'm not concerned at, over at this point in time. The other state and local revenues, the sales and use tax and utilities franchise, those are one of the, or both of those are, they, they lag behind a quarter. So these are really only a quarter of revenues because of the method of distribution on them. Utilities franchise tax, we were in the, we were in the cool weather, no heat, no cool. That probably is the twenty percent. And then sales and use tax, since that's a quarter, that's only one quarter. That's pretty good for forty percent on the, the distribution. Occupancy tax, still pumping strong, is ninety percent and versus eighty percent as of last year. The, again, the occupancy tax, that's ninety percent of a larger number than we had budgeted last year. So that's, that's looking good. Building, half, we're about halfway through the year, so at forty-five percent, we're about halfway there on, on building-related permits. And then, of course, parking is strong with only the first half fiscal year collections on the book at a hundred and sixteen percent. You, you saw in the, the, the attachment to the parking, the finances for the calendar year was four hundred and forty-five. Remember, this is the fiscal year and only reflects from July first forward. On the debt side, we're about halfway finished with the year and we've got about half of our capital debt paid. Specific call out on some, because the commissioners have expressed some desire for detail on what else in the professional services lines and reflecting on that, and there's many of those items have been discussed tonight. Suffice it to say, we've got engineers, architects, and surveyors engaged on seven ninety-six, Ocean Boulevard West, Block Hugh, the pier. Canal dredging is, is another project that stays hidden until somebody bumps their lower unit on the bottom of a canal. Streets will be moving forward with the springtime paving of the next iteration of our streets improvement plan soon. The bulkheads, along with the Greensboro lift station. And additionally, we do have the RFQ for selfish that came in today. The RFP is previously mentioned for the painting and, and various carpentry and mechanical issues are, is due on the nineteenth. Stormwater is out, is due on the nineteenth also. And the auditor RFP is due tomorrow. That will be ready for y'all to review and select at the next board meeting. Specifically, numbers-wise, all of these numbers are in the black. We're, we're in good shape for, for this time of year. This is actuals revenues by fund versus actual expenses by fund. Does anybody have any questions on those? I know we went through that one real quick, flip back to it. I'm not asking for questions, but we did go through that real quick. This is a normal progression or the previous first quarter report that I did in September, I believe it was, we were in the, we were in the red in several funds, but overall, we're in the black. It's just the cyclical nature of both of our major, both of our major revenue streams. And we're about where we should be at this point in time.
So is the water sewer, we're more confident that we've got the fee structure right that, because I think that was one of them that was in the red and it was a case of...
Well, and from, from the, the, I only looked at the capital, I only looked at the capital collections. I didn't look at the operations aspect of it. So I'll have to bring that back to you.
Okay.
So my, my opinion on the, the bottom line is that it's probably seasonally transitionable and normal. So we're, we're about where we should be. As a reminder to everybody, we post in ad infinitum detail our budget to actual, our complete budget, actual revenues and expenses on the town's website. We try to do that as soon after the, the ending of the month, on a workday, the following workday. And if there's any questions on, on that detail, I'd be glad to entertain, should have anybody, anybody have any questions or any of the information that you see tonight?
Any questions of Mr. Hewitt? Thank you very much. Mayor's comments are brief?
Oh, oh, wait, that was just the budget. I'm not finished yet. That was just on the budget. I, I will be quick, sir.
Scare me.
I, I will be quick. We have some really good news that I don't think that we're accustomed to seeing in this forum. The federal budget that was passed at the end of December included a total of three point eight million dollars in community earmarks for Holden Beach. That's two point seven million dollars for the sewer lift station. It's going to come through, to us through an EPA, state tribal and local government fund. A million dollars for the coastal storm damage reduction study, which is, goes through the Corps of Engineers coffers. And then there's another hundred thousand dollars in stormwater funding for the Corps' improvement programs. We are working through our federal advocates for the STAG requirements and details and as to exactly how that program works because we do not know at this point in time. In addition to asking the Wilmington District on what are the next steps in our path forward for both the storm reduction study and the stormwater program. The FEMA final inspection on our beach project is still awaiting the, the final inspection and we have responded to the FEMA request for additional info. As a reminder, they're still holding about six hundred thousand dollars, which is primarily special obligation bond interest. And whenever, whenever we hear from them is wherever we hear from them. It's, they're holding, have their own timeline. It sure wouldn't be nice to go ahead and get our reimbursements finalized so we can close that project out once and for all. Updated information on the Ocean Boulevard resurface and bike path status. Last month, I reported that the state was going to put a two, a two-prong bid out. One of those solicitations would have attempted to get the project in before Memorial Day. They waived that off and are going to go with, with one prime solicitation that is being prepared so that the repaving, resurfacing, bike lane installation will be installed mid-September of twenty... be installed mid-September of '23 through Memorial Day, sometime in that timeframe. Ocean Boulevard has been covered before, the 796 project, that is supposed to come back to us here next couple days. We have informally solicited rental property management services on what the projections for those rentals might be, and that'll be coming back to you once we get that information complete. The pier, the second appraisal on the part of grant is underway. Once we get that early February, we'll go ahead and be able to finish that paperwork up and get it forward to the state part of folks. We have reviewed the revised site plan based on the commissioner's feedback from December, and provided input and an updated survey to CHIP for further revision, and then we anticipate that final plan review coming forward to the commissioners at the February regular meeting. Since he sent me the wrap-up bill, I'm assuming that that's, he's feeling he's about done with it. Block Q, the conversation with Randy last week, again, we're awaiting revision to the site plan based on y'all's review and some suggestions to use the site perimeter right away for car parking where best possible and feasible, so. And are assuming that that'll be plenty of time to get it to you at the February meeting. Last but not least, we are doing the every-other-year canal dredging survey. It is underway now, and we are anticipating that to be, in plenty of time to program whatever the assessments might be into the fiscal year budget for next year. An item that continues to be problematic is, of course, is when it gets time to do the next canal dredging surveys, we don't have a place to put it. So, we are working that as one of our federal priorities in order to make some headway there. That's all I have to say.
David, for the $1 million for the CSDR, was this meant to cover the year two, year three obligation, or is...
Is their fiscal year...
They're now saying that it's going to, instead of our second installment being $800,000, it's going to be a million.
That's one of those questions that I have to ask them when we talk to them, and they hadn't responded to me.
Okay.
I don't, no, well, it's important, because I don't know, I don't know, I don't know where to break in our fiscal year.
Yeah, okay.
And their fiscal year, that is offset, so I'm not, I don't know.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Hewitt? Mr. Hewitt, is there anything else that you'd like to discuss from the report before we move on?
Well, I was going to look real quick to see what we had budgeted for the contribution for the Corps study. Pat looked before, she's cheating, $800,000, so.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
We've only, we've only been fronting them half of what our obligation is in order to keep them on a short leash previously. What success that happened, I don't know, but I'm done.
You're done? All right. Mayor's report, as I was about to say, is going to be short. I noticed that, Mr. Clemens, you've had a lot of activity with your men around the bridge area there. Anything we need to know about that particular area?
Well, I was thinking those borderlines that were staged down in the map from years ago. God, I had a bad vision, too, of what was going to happen. Good idea, this is two-inch borderlines, but some of the, the one piece of the, they're done yet, for a reason.
Okay.
The good news is it's in the right of way, it's not actually on the park, you sail, and it's been parked and all this, that, and that's going to be a continuing investigation, we're not giving it up right now.
You're making progress under the bridge.
We just wanted to clear it up before it came up, construction issue.
Yeah. Again, reminding property owners, thanks to the police department's report about frozen pipes and so forth, the emails that we had sent out earlier in the winter, reminding people about docks and showers and so forth, and we all ask again that the homeowners be mindful of any exposed pipes that might be subject to freezing. Please take care of them, because it impacts the town operation of the maintenance department being called out in the middle of the night, and police department being running up and down the roads for these excessive calls that probably could be reduced in number if the homeowners would be more mindful of their obligations, taking care of their property. So, try not to be too harsh, but please, please take care of your property. And thank everybody for what they're doing, and let's have a good 2023. And Mr. Rick, what you got?
Well, it's not going to be as long as it usually is, but I'm really looking forward to reviewing the pier and the Block Q preliminary plans, and I hope with the help of our town staff that we'll be able to, now that we are getting to that stage, we can start soliciting for some grant money, which I think is, in speaking with some of the town staff, David in particular, that that has already started, which is, which is, is something that I, again, near and dear to my heart, and I sure hope that we are successful in getting some assistance. I attended a, with David and Alan, I attended a DOT meeting about the proposed Carolina Bays Parkway extension to kind of take a little load off of Highway 17 between 130 and Highway 31 down in South Carolina, and it seems that there's, has been no decisions made, so we're, it's still, it's still up in the air as far as the exact location of where it's going to start and end, and what path it will actually take. As Alan said, I really appreciate being part of this board. We seem to work well together. We vent things out, we talk with our fellow board members, and I think we do a good job of making hard decisions. So, it's a pleasure to work with this group. It's, it continues to surprise me how well we work together and how we're moving forward. I'd like to talk, thank the people for attending the meeting tonight, speaking, the ones that are online, thank you for taking your time to listen to us conduct our meeting this evening, and again, I'm looking forward to a successful 2023 with our town staff. Now should be smiling, I hope, and I'm looking forward to working with them, to continue to work with them, and they're getting compensated, I believe, a whole lot closer to where they need to be. But that's it, sir.
Mr. Murdock?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out again. I know a lot of people have left. Thanks for listening, as usual. We appreciate your comments, and we read them all, and we listen. To the staff, again, thanks for sticking with us, hopefully what we've managed to do, and thank you, David, for the work you've done on getting these salaries up to where they, to where they're a little more competitive with our neighboring beaches and so forth, that hopefully we can fill some empty positions and retain the talent that we do have, and I really appreciate the hard work for all you guys. The inspection department, as Tim said, I'm privy, I've lived at inspection department for over 20 years now, and it's probably running the best I've ever seen it run at this juncture. It's efficient, it's becoming more efficient, and it's, they're really making sure that everybody working on this island, not only is licensed, but they're doing a good job at what they do, and making sure that the customer in the end gets the product that they deserve, and it's safe. We've got a lot of rental houses here, and that's what you need to consider, because it's not just you, the people that are living there, it's all the people that come to this beach that have to live in your house, so to speak, for, enjoy it for a week. We want to keep them safe, so I commend you and your department on that, and we've got a lot of things to be excited about. They're going to take some time to put together, and we've got people working on every project, and sooner or later, with a lot of luck, and it'll come to pass, and there'll be a lot of new facilities here for the public to enjoy and be proud of, hopefully, in the end, but everybody stay well, stay safe, I know a lot of people have been sick, and just take care of yourself, and come see us at the next meeting.
Doctor?
I don't want to repeat everything that's been said, it's going to be short. We're going into the third hour here. I just want to thank the staff for all their hard work, and I'm glad to see that we've been able to get you guys up to where you need to be. It's a long time coming, and I think y'all deserve it, and everybody have a happy new year, and thanks for listening to us this evening.
Ms. Pat?
Well, again, as everybody else, I'd like to thank staff. Last year was a rough year, this year hopefully will be better. I would actually like to reach out to the public a bit here. You have all of the budget, the scheduled budget meetings in the packet that you can hopefully get them in your calendar. Our budget meetings are going to be at 5:30 in the evening, they're not going to be in the daytime as they've been in the past, so I really hope that as we get into discussing budget, we have some people who are tuning in, maybe even coming to the meeting, so that you can start to follow better some of the intricacies of what we're going to have to go through. And again, this is going to be one of those interesting years, because we've got so many things that we're planning, we're just going to have to make decisions on what order to do things in, and I think people who are really interested in how the town is moving forward will benefit from coming to some of those budget meetings. Thanks.
All right. Madam Clerk, we're at number 25.
Close session, we're just doing North Carolina General Statute 1433189, and A3, follow the attorney.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Thank all of you for being here this evening and having such a wonderful time together with us.
Motion to adjourn.
Vote second.
All in favor say aye.